My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma, and just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
(inaudible)
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 Sandy Wallace.
Sandy Wallace. I am the president and treasurer of the Park County Senior Citizens, which is different from Midland Meals that does the delivery of meals or feeding the seniors in the community building, and more different from the Dine with the Doc program at Metis Terps. So, we've been in existence since 1965 here in Park County and became a nonprofit in '95 or '96. So, we're not just a small little fly of the night. We've been, we're at the community building for decades. And so, we found out about it going to sell, it's kind of through us in a tizzy because we meet there sometimes monthly indefinitely for the Cover Bridge Festival for Christmas weekend and for the yard sale weekend. And we don't just concentrate on ourselves or, as Brandy mentioned, you don't want to attract retirees to the county because they don't help your tax base. Well, we're not trying to attract anybody. We're trying to serve the senior citizens that are already in Park County. And we have the wide years, you know, 50 years old and up is what we consider senior citizens for our group. So, when we have something going on in the county, we call it like a comfort station where we let people come in, they can have a seat, they can have free coffee. If somebody wants to shop and leave their elderly parents or somebody there, you know, we've got a place they can eat lunch if they want to bring their lunch. And so, it's not just for a handful of people. And so, one reason we got a grant recently to paint and clean the inside and outside of that building was to build up the idea that more people would want to come and rent it, and we can help with that. We're willing to help with that. I understand that women in the office don't necessarily like going down there and dealing with it, but we can help with that. The senior group is willing to do it. If you want to give us, either give us some time, something, but we've got a shed out back. I don't even have a clue how much it would cost to move it or where we could put it. All the tables and chairs in there are ours, those big wall hangings on the wall. It's like, I don't even know where to start to think of moving all that stuff. So, I'm wondering if you couldn't leave a senior center open in the county and work with us? Give us time to see if we can make it work because there was a time from, was it March of 2020 when COVID shut everything down? You weren't making any money there, nobody was. Then the next year, the health department was there with what, 21, maybe into '22? Nobody could be there. And so, you didn't make any money renting it from parties and such then. So, you can't judge by that and say nobody wants to rent it because I think people will if it's cleaned up and it looks halfway decent and if we keep it that way. Because the seniors are more interested in keeping it nice. We've got a whole pile of nails, screws, tape, everything that we took off the walls. And the last people rented it put staples in that new paint on every wall. And they're not like your staple your papers, they're like contractor staples level with the wall. You've got to dig into the new paint to get them out. We would not give the deposit back. They got their deposit back. You know, that kind of thing makes a difference. If you keep up on it and you keep the building nice, then more people are going to be willing to rent it. So, I would say, will you please just either give us some time to say we'll have a senior center there continue or something? We might even be able to see how we could afford to buy it ourselves at some point. But I believe we need a senior center in Park County.
Well, we're not unsympathetic to your situation, but I mean, we don't really make any money off that thing of renting anyways. So, I don't really think that was a big factor in this, whether we're going to rent it out or not. But we've got some other things that may be coming up. We do have interested parties in that building as well as this building.
Would you give us time, like say, a year? If by the end of next year, you can't see that it's working better, having it cleaned and painted and us working with you and, like Brandy said, you know, I'm sure you all have the key to it. Well, I know our group's only got two. And, you know, change the locks, let us keep track of who's got the rental, keep track of the deposits, y'all keep earning the money and just work with us and let us help just so we can have a senior center available. Could you give us that, at least a year? I mean, we're days away from the Cover Bridge Festival. Are we still going to be able to sell it?
Well, yeah, we're not. It's not like it's going to sell here in the next day or two anyways. I mean, as a matter of fact, I don't think anything's been...
Nick and I are working on it. I've explained this, Sandy, multiple times that it's a process, it doesn't happen overnight. And I explained to you as well that I think it'd be beneficial for you to just at least ask the council that I think your biggest concern is the selling of your items during Cover Bridge Festival. And you mentioned you sell some stuff out of there over Christmas. You know, I think the biggest concern that you might ask for is that you have it reserved for October.
That's what I was talking about.
I don't think there's any comments that can be made future going into a year or deep, but at least for right now, like I said, it's not been advertised in the paper, so it's not going to happen in the next 30 days.
Right. And I was getting ready to say that when you started talking, but we have plans through December for our meeting there and our Christmas dinner too. So, what do you think of the idea though of holding off? I mean, if you have to sell it, that's fine, but would you give it a year just to see if we could make it work so that Park County could have a senior center so that people that are, I mean, not even elderly, but 50 and up have a place to go to socialize, so they're not isolated at home? Or if they need help, we don't have anything available in Park County that I'm aware of for seniors, except that? Except our group doing that?
Well, I mean, we can open it up to a discussion, but I mean, I believe the boards in all in agreement that we want to sell. I don't know that we could necessarily hold it for a year. I mean, I mean, we can hold it obviously, we don't have to sell it, but I mean...
The appraisal's good for two years, isn't it?
Do what?
The appraisal, isn't it good for two years?
The appraisals are good for two years, but they weren't recently done. So, I don't know what the exact date they were done is. We could be pushing up on the two years already. We'll have to look, I mean, I don't, off the top of my head, I mean, one of you guys might remember better than I do. But it's a process anyway. Once we publish, then we have to open the bids on it. And then we have a period of time where we can decide on whether we want to do the bids. And then whoever's buying it, I assume, would probably be financing. So, they're going to have to have it looked at through inspections and things like that. I think it could easily be a four to six month process on selling it, I mean, even in the best of times. So, just my forecast anyway.
Do you see the need for a senior center in Park County? It is the county seat in Rockville.
Well, Sandy, you mentioned to me earlier that it's not your meeting issue, it wasn't an issue. I mean, you could, you said you could find other locations to hold your meeting because I know I recommended or suggested, I guess, rather, maybe reach out to a church that you could actually hold your meetings. And you mentioned that really the festival was your biggest concern about the selling of items in there, but...
Not just the festival. And what I would prefer to see is more things going on there for the seniors to come and be open, like certain hours of days, three or four days a week or more. I've seen senior centers be open five days. And they support themselves by fundraising. And one I worked at in Covington has a thrift store where they took in donations and sold things. We bring in $400 a week, cash money. So, that goes a long way towards supporting a senior center, just us doing senior things, not just what we've been doing. But it didn't make sense to me to try to encourage people to come there and rent that building or join the senior group when the building was in terrible appearance. Not that the building itself is so bad, but the appearance of it wasn't all that appealing. And so, our group, members of our group went in and redid the bathrooms a few years ago. I understand it may not be to everybody's taste, but the seniors were really happy with it. The people that come through the festival, a lot of them say, "We come here first." This is what they want to see. And I think that people would come more, they would rent it more, the seniors in the county would come more once we were able to... We just now, the very day we found out it was for sale, was finishing up the outside work on the building. So, it's very new to us, a blessing, right up two, three weeks ago we found out. And so, we weren't looking to make quick change, but now we've got that part of it done, I would like to see us have a chance of building up something there that's of value to the county, not just our group.
Well, I would say right now, about the only thing we can do would be look at our appraisal dates and see, see, you know, where we're at with that and, you know, you know, decision time being made tonight not to sell it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We just need to see where we're at on our appraisals and what kind of time we're looking at. And we'll have an answer in two weeks or, I'm assuming, two weeks, our next meeting.
Come back to your next meeting? Is that what you think I would do?
That's what I would do.
So, can you tell me now, tonight, that you would let us do our thing through December? The things that we have planned in October and December?
I would say October, you're pretty safe. I mean, you know, December's still four months away, so, but like I said, all we can do is look and see. I mean, there's literally been nothing done with this yet. So, as Nick stated, I mean, what are you looking at? I mean, if we had something going right today, it'd take how many months?
I mean, depends on how many times you give to receive bids, but yeah, I would estimate probably three or four months anyway would be my guess because depending on whether they're financing or not. If they're financing through a bank, that means a long, you know? If they're not financing, it could be done maybe two months, but...
Do you have any other, like, when you decided to sell the building, was there any thoughts about what to do with the senior citizens then, you know, senior citizens center and our stuff? Do you have any idea what we can do with the shed and these great big wall hangings and chairs and tables?
Well, not to the point right now, but there is, I mean, there's things that's going to be coming up. So, that's about all I can say. You know, but like I said, you know, we've had interest in this building and that building and...
Well, we have an interest in that building too, it's just we can't write a check. But, you know, we can ask you to work with us and keep it open for the senior citizens.
Well, like I said, we'll, you know, we'll get our appraisals together and see what, you know, where we're at from there.
So, you can say definitely through the Bridge Festival, we're good?
I would say we'd be good with that. I assume everybody's okay with at least the Bridge Festival, so...
Okay. So, I'll come back in two weeks.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please consider keeping the senior center for the county. I think it would benefit really good.
Greg's not here, so, Nick, you want to jump up?
So, this, I have an ordinance for you guys to consider, it's just updating the solar ordinance for the town, meet tempers requirements as far as up to date with what their services provided are. So, we just need a vote to repeal the old ordinance and put the new ordinance in place.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, yeah, actually four spots this time.
Is this the same?
Same day, same meeting. There's one repealing the old and one putting the new one in place.
Sandy, same day, what, what?
Attending.
What changed?
They just had certain things that they wanted in it as far as their purchasing of the overage of whatever's generated. And they had certain language they went in there as far as their rights, basically. So, it wasn't anything that was a law as far as the town or anything like that. I did add that if you violate the ordinance, that the town can recoup attorney fees. It was only denied after. So, I mean, if we have to go into prolonged litigation with somebody, then it's not just...
Offer full ordinance numbers.
Do what? No, that was all I had. I don't know if you want to talk about it. The utilities needs are down for Anderson Street, they're in Brandy's office. So, anybody that's doing that or willing to do that could come to Brandy's office. Do you have an order in there? Well, I guess you can text me, I'll send an order over if we need one.
So, they, the owners need to go by?
Sign, yeah. There were like 12 or 14, there was a lot of them, so, north and south side of the road.
You signed both?
I did talk to Sandy Todd.
Oh, I missed one, I think.
But it should be everything, we need an order so we can get them all signed, so...
So, should I get with Cindy on the other contacts? I shared as much of that information as I could with her and then I don't know if she was able to or just make that contact right now or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not sure next step as far as who wants to talk to the owner or things like that, but the legal stuff, it's all in its current owners, so... There were, there were two legal enemies, I didn't know who was signing, so I just left them blank that can be filled in because I wasn't sure who they were signing it would be, Jean and the bank. And I also don't know the question on whether or not they wanted their easement on, whether the east side of the first financial or not. So, that's like the last, ask Luke if he's here.
Okay. Well, no, you got, does anybody else have anything for Nick? I do want to ask one question. You and I talked today about the bathrooms, so just explain to these guys so we're clear.
So, my understanding on the bathroom projects is that we haven't actually accepted a bid, is that right? Because if that's the case, we can deny all bids, we can give specific specs and ask that they be bid competitively on the specific specs if we want to do that. We're not required to accept any bids. So, that's what your options are, or you can accept bids, it's up to you guys, so...
Okay. Well, that pretty much explains that, so. Anything else? Anybody got anything that want to run by Nick? He needs to get to know each other.
I can stick for about 5:45 or something, so that's what I'm hoping to get.
All right. Well, we'll move back to Brandy then.
Okay. Quing's in the mail, 237-306-23. That was for the first few days here. We've got an end of office coming separate for 137-684-16. Motion for approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. So, just note, we, Doug, you, we ordered a couple of transformers, three phase, those are on these claims. I don't know if you guys remember sorting those, they're $43,000 for two of them. Got our poles, $23,000. So, yeah, we've got some backup three phase, got a bunch of poles. Let's get started.
I have August 19, August 19 minutes for approval.
You didn't sign this one?
I did.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right.
Bill?
Okay, so, this year we had six ECWS entries, last year we had 80. This year we had one felony, last year we had four. This year we had six misdemeanors, and this is off for September. Last year we had nine. We had 10 fractions this year, 13 last. Had four ordinance violations this year and last. We had 50 warnings and 80 last. Tahoe is also to reference the radio control not properly, and that's actually the control of the vehicle, not just the radio channels. That's a pretty pricey part, I'm hoping that's still going to be covered by General Motors, but the Tahoe's both are running really, well, Ian's has already passed the warranty stage and...
So, is the other one. We're just hoping that General Motors is nice enough to stay and cover that too.
So, they're, they're probably going to get pricey. That brings me up to the tire fund and the vehicle maintenance fund. I don't know that they need to be combined, but I just wanted to make sure that it was okay with everyone that I use the tire fund to pay for vehicle maintenance so that when you see stuff coming out of that line, I will understand that those are...
Not all tires.
Yeah. And then I would also like to ask to raise the spending amount on the vehicle maintenance and the body armor because those can both be very expensive. Now, I'm not asking for more money, just that when I go to purchase those items, that those would be higher than the $2,500 due to the price of those items.
What would you like it to be?
I would say five would probably be more than enough.
We'll make that motion.
Well, hold on, we're doing our budget. I mean, you're talking for this year or for next year?
This year. Yeah, I'm not, like I said, I'm not asking for more money. I'm just asking that if I go to buy something and those two line items, I don't need to ask for permission. If I buy two vest or three vests, that's $3,000. So, I have to wait for two weeks to order that third vest because it's past the amount that I'm allowed to spend. Or, you know, if I take the Tahoe in for repair and that radio is over $2,000, then I have to wait two weeks to get that repaired. Which is why I'm asking to up those two line items so that, I'm not, like I said, I'm asking for more money just that I'd be allowed to purchase those items if I need them.
Increase the spending authority on those two line items.
Right, right, okay. Well, next year, yeah, you want to incorporate that in the budget. You know, as far as the tire and vehicle maintenance, I don't know why the tires are broken out. We should probably combine those and, yeah, I see what you're saying, Doug. You move, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. And then, are we, when are we having a budget workshop?
Every guy's wants.
Soon, soon, yeah.
November?
November.
Not up till...
Well, how, how are you doing on the budget? You started yours?
Oh, I started, I'm very close, I think.
Well, once you get it put together, once you send it out, let everybody look at it. And I think we have a fire partner already, and usually you and fire or police fire is pretty timely. Yeah, do something as soon as you can. And if we don't have it by the 16th or next meeting, the next opportunity would be the, what is it, 7th of October?
That's a no-go. That's a no-go.
Well, you're very busy, but yeah, yeah, sooner the better.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Doug?
Well, we have a question. It's Jim over here, lives right across Market Street there on the corner of Market and High. He is owner of that property and when the project started, it was somebody else on that property and they did not want the trees removed. So, they are still there in a project or to stay. He has a question on a poplar tree that has been dug around quite a bit. He's worried about it falling, dying and falling because of all the digging. I don't know much about trees. I did take Britain, which is pretty knowledgeable about trees, he doesn't think it'll bother it and because of being a poplar tree, but he was just concerned about leaving it. But it was in a project to stay because of the previous owners.
Well, are you wanting it down? Does that, I mean, does that do it go?
I think it needs to come down because there's been, the roots on three of the four sides have been destroyed, actually picked down, and some of those are as much as 14 inches across. And I just don't want it to fall on either my house or a vehicle or even the property across the street. I hate to see someone get hurt when it's something that we could take down now instead of having to worry. It's going, even the gentleman that were, that were digging around it, they said it's going to fall, it's just a question of when.
Well, I would agree with that. I mean, I've seen it, but I don't, I'm not a tree expert either, but is this something that we could take down or is it...
We could probably take it down, yeah. Sooner the better.
I mean, we wouldn't have to have him to do this.
No, no, no. The big question would be getting the stump out of there because the sidewalk was poured today.
Well, they have to wait.
They poured up too.
Yeah. We could grind that out, we could always go in and grind that out later. So, but the tree is something we could...
So, they did pour the sidewalks to bed?
Yes.
It's not right next to the tree, they left it back.
Did they leave it there?
Yeah, they left that section open just in case if it didn't even come out.
Well, I mean, my goal would be to take it down, but whatever you guys think, I mean, I'd rather do it now before we get the street done.
Well, that's my, I'd rather do it if they want it down and you guys approve it, I'd rather go in there now before the block top is there and not set outriggers down on the block top until we just have to.
I'll make a motion.
Ross, like?
All in favor?
Aye.
To both?
Good weather for coming.
Yeah, it's better. On Market Street, mentioned Market Street, talked in today, the pavers will be, the black top will be in the ninth and 10th. We'll start doing the main and then we'll have to come back and touch it up and everything. So, that'd be the ninth and 10th and everything for that. As you guys have seen, the pavers are going down pretty quick, looking really nice. You see there on the, just kind of update what some of you guys have been doing there on the east side of Double D where that water holds all the time. We replaced several feet of the storm drain. It was completely collapsed and broken in, clay tile, so that has been replaced. Should drain much, much better. And then we did have a tree limb fall here a week or so ago. Take out two of our poles there on, at Joe's Alley. So, the guys were out all night until the afternoon on, had to replace two poles and all the wire, well, did, put the wire back up and everything. And just for up and coming, Ian's working on it. We did have a transformer hit Saturday night. Ian's working on contacting the gentleman that hit it.
So, they hit the pole?
They hit the transformer box.
Oh, it's on the ground, oh, okay.
So, that was the power out Saturday night into Sunday morning. So, we had four guys, a couple trucks and some equipment over there that we're getting together for Ian to be able to get it taken care of.
So, so what's, we filed a police report?
Yeah.
We have a suspect, probably can have a warrant for that person very shortly.
Okay. They didn't, they didn't just hang around or what?
No.
Okay. Ooh, I better get out of here.
Yeah. Likely there was a guy sitting on his back patio that seen it all, was able to tell us.
So, normally go after their insurance first and then our...
Yeah, so we got that, that way, he doesn't have insurance or anything, we'll have all the report showing what has happened.
What's cost more of those?
The price we just for the transformer that we're going to, we replaced was $8,170. That's not counting the pad.
Did we have one?
Yes.
Okay, we have one. Good. We have a backup?
Yes, we still do. Because those are, we use them all over, so we have a few of them down there. So, we're still in good shape with the stock, it's just we had to put one in that we shouldn't have had to.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's just the transformer. So, we'll still, they're figuring up their hours and equipment and stuff for a total for about, I think he was out three hours replacing that, so. But yeah, Ian was right there helping us out. Any more questions on that? And then McDonald's water tap should be made this week, I was down there talking today. They are making that tap, their own company. We will be on scene when they do make the tap and everything. was $8,170. And that's not counting the pad.
Did, did, did we have one?
Yes.
Okay, we have one.
Yeah.
Good. We have a backup?
Yes, we still do. Because those are, we use them all over, so we have a few of them down there. So we're still in good shape with the stock. It's just, we had to put one in that we shouldn't have had to.
Yeah.
And, uh, and that's not, that's just the transformer. So we'll still, they're figuring up their hours and equipment and stuff for a total, for about, I think he was out three hours replacing that, so... But, yeah, Ian was right there helping us out. Any more questions on that? And then McDonald's water tap should be made this week. I was down there talking today. They are making that tap, their own company. We will be on scene when they do make the tap and everything. Our guys will be there with them. But they are actually making the tap and doing all the born. They got all the permits and everything to cross the highway. So, but that's, that should be this week, so they're moving right along.
Well, they're putting in their, uh...
Like plastic, yeah. Yeah, they're going, I think inch and a half.
Are they gonna case it?
Do what?
Are they gonna case it?
I didn't ask him that. I can't ask him if he, if he, I think he has to. Yeah. Because when we dealt with ours, anything now, it doesn't matter the size, anything has to be cased. So I will touch base with him tomorrow to make sure that, which I'm sure they do. And then the 120 water, we are down to 380 meters of that and we'll have that finished. So hopefully in the next two weeks, providing things stay where we can stay on it. So that, that should be wrapped up in the next two weeks and we can move on from that. Speaking of electric, they, uh, we've been using quite a bit of underground wire, so they had to order some and other equipment. They've been using with all the power outs and poles and all that stuff. So just the underground wire to replace is $11,250. But when you add everything together, all the bolts, uh, washers and everything they need, ties, uh, it's $20,033. So you need approval for them to get their supplies?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Um, outside of that, other than, um, the bathrooms that were brought up earlier, assuming you want to rewrite the one for the park. But I do have, um, the one for the depot coming from Kelly Heating. Uh, I believe, I think I sent that to you guys.
Where is that from?
Kelly Heating.
Where are they at?
Um, says 612 Gould Street, Rockville. I wasn't there to meet him. Brett met him. And you have the other bid from AC, which is, uh, he was supposed to figure up another one, but I never received anything from him.
It's not Andrew Kelly's. Not Andrew Kelly's?
No.
No, sorry. Jason. Jason Kelly, I think it's the other one.
Yes.
Walter Black's heating room. He does this on the side.
Okay.
I will stay on at least one if I didn't check the other one. But, uh, we cannot do any kind of prepaid.
Right, you can do, no.
Yeah.
They can do an installment billing after they meet thresholds if they want to.
Is that what he's doing?
Yeah.
He's supposed to submit another one.
I have no idea what that's all about.
We're still waiting. AC Electric, I had, I guess, I'm sorry if I shouldn't have mentioned his name, but, um, I guess this bid is just for the access panel. It's not for the whole bathroom. So he's supposed to be writing up another bid for that. But he's never, never got, had sent it to me or anything, so...
Well, I guess we can't really act on this tonight then, unless...
So...
Yeah, didn't look like it.
Uh, I can reach out tomorrow to Kelly and let him know about, we can't pre.
I'd reach out to him and make sure that, I mean...
Well, you know...
I know CDC's obviously paying for this. They want to make it happen, so...
We, this is a recurring event. We, we, we just, we, we need better, we need to, as a board, need to do a better job of getting specs for what it is we want. Uh, these guys come in, the bidders come in and they look. They kind of do what they think we want, I suppose. But we, we need to come up with a, uh, you know, everybody has their jobs...
We need to have at least a general idea of one.
Yeah, yeah.
No, the depot bathrooms are pretty self-explanatory not to come back. Why, I mean, I understand why he thought we just wanted to heat the little hallway and not the sinks and all that.
Well, I thought we were heating the whole darn place.
Yes, exactly. So why he come back with the bid?
But I didn't write that down anywhere. I just assumed, well, okay, we're gonna heat the bathroom, go, you put a heater in.
Yes.
Uh, I don't quite get what these two bids are doing. It's like they're heating certain sections.
Yeah. AC's only heating where the plumbing is at inside the wall, small, narrow section, which he was told we needed it all heated and it was gonna be open year-round. So he should understand that the toilets and areas would need to be heated.
Yeah, I think so.
So why he come back with this bid, I don't know. But, um, I will touch out or reach out to Kelly and all them.
Is the only thing holding back that any of our vendors is just because of the payment option?
Yeah.
That if they want to take action on that, that they don't want to accept it based on a new proposal?
He'd have to submit a new proposal. You can't do the, you can only vote on what's before you, unfortunately.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him in the morning.
Well, I'd say we'll table this one more time. Hopefully we'll have something to...
Good, we can talk about bathrooms for a minute.
Oh, buddy.
Favorite thing. Outside that, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Doug. You, uh, wanna talk about any projects ready?
Uh, I don't have anything. From what's we, until soon.
Well, do we wanna talk about bidders? We need to prove that and stuff?
I don't know.
I don't have any information on the cost of ownership.
They didn't give us specific number? No.
I don't have anything on it.
Okay. Well, I, I, okay, well...
I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any documentation on that one, so...
Are there gutters now?
Or is there a body of steel on this?
I don't think so.
Well, apparently gutters weren't included in the bid that they gave. And so we're obviously going to put butters, gutters. We're gonna put butters in there, we're gonna put gutters in there. Uh, you would think if there's sidewalks and gutters, they would have, but anyway, it's, it's, is what it is.
Aren't there already gutters there though?
There, yes.
So weren't they just replacing the existing?
Well, that's what we thought. But, okay, well, why not? And we're going to, we gotta have gutters, sidewalks. Uh, just see what, what they, you know, what do we need?
Yes.
They haven't submitted any type of cost difference to me at all.
Okay.
I've only verbally been given information, so...
This request.
I don't know where the original cost...
I mean, it goes up to $48, $50 a legal foot, I saw. So, you know, you're looking for about $50,000. Well, you know, they just...
We missed it.
Huh?
We missed it in the bid.
It looks like milestone. Anyway, she'll get information, you'll get information.
We can make a motion on this and, right, as far as on contingents of...
I don't know.
Certain money or...
You really just need to have the bid until they are ready to finish.
Right.
Uh, where that project's at.
Okay. Well, it looks like my...
They redid, they've relocated everything and if we have the right...
Miller's about ready to wrap up, it looks like. They're up to the end of the alley.
Yeah, they're about to make a tie in there.
They have them, they're just not signed.
We don't have any of them.
But after Miller...
They said they were all...
They're all done and drafted. I drafted them.
They will gas up the alley and start, I believe they're gonna start running services on, on, on Rockville Road. Get those taken care of so they can start putting structures in on Rockville Road and come up to Hook Street and then go back down Anderson. Putting their structure, their piping structures in for storm. And then they'll proceed from there.
Okay. Well, we just want, wanna be sure we're ready.
I mean, Foyce is one that's gonna be doing this.
Foyce is doing the, uh, the concrete work and that and then Milestone's doing the actual paving.
Right.
I assume, Foyce will probably be, be involved on, as soon as, I assume, since they're working milestone on this, they're probably milestone.
Foyce is also on Stark Street.
Stark Street.
So we might as well, yeah, sooner we can get information and, and move on to better so they can plan their schedule, I guess. Um...
And we can't do anything till we get a bid, so let's just move on because, I mean, there's nothing we can do with this.
So hopefully next week, we can move on it so they can have it in their schedule.
Yep.
Okay.
So, uh, Mike, you got anything?
No, I don't.
Bruce?
I do. I, we talked about the UV situation down there last week. I talked to Trojan and they will outweigh that $1,700 fee. So, I mean, it would be really nice to see a quote from Trojan. They were the original manufacturer of that equipment. I would like to see them give us a refurb price and a price to completely replace everything.
You're talking Trojan?
Well...
Yeah, true.
Well, you know, they're coming out of...
But I don't have, I mean, UV on that, give us the bid. I mean, I completely trust their work. They do work on our...
Well, it's good to have two bids, first off. But they're probably coming out of Ontario, Canada. I mean, that's...
Yeah, they are a Canadian company, so...
So they're, they're traveling?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not uncommon.
Right.
In, in multiple industries to someone...
It depends on you guys, if you wanna, totally up to you.
Well, we should have two bids for a $100,000 thing, I would say, a project. I mean, it'd be good if...
Yeah, I'd be real curious to see what complete replacement would cost versus refurb, so... Well, that's gonna be a good one.
I don't wanna pay it either, but at, at the same time, I mean, it needs to be done. $1,700 to transfer.
I would like to have the information. I think it's worth the investment to have it come down. Look.
Okay.
I guess I'm...
Does motion?
I move.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good deal. All right, the only other thing I have is, uh, my roof's leaking on the lab down there around all the vents. I talked to Doug about it a while back and I know those guys have been busy, but my grid channel needs, it's clogged too. It needs to jet it out whenever they get time and, uh...
We got a flat roof?
No, it's not flat. It doesn't have a lot of pitch. It's maybe a 312.
Is it asphalt or metal?
It's asphalt.
Does it need a new roof?
Yeah, it's probably good. It's been on there a long time, so...
Uh, how big is it? I can't visualize it.
Not real big. I'd say maybe 10, 12 square tall, so...
Well, should we be getting quotes for roof at the, well, which, what, which building is it?
It's the main lab, the one on the hill.
Yeah.
Be very specific in what you ask.
Uh, it's a rubber roof, so...
I'm sorry, what?
It'd be a rubberized roof's what it is, so...
Rubberized?
Yeah, it's kind of rubber, but it's flat.
Yeah, it's not flat.
It's...
Not completely, there's not, the backside, there's pitch on it. I don't know about that, if there's a flat part on it or not. Part used to be. I remember when those...
Well, can we pitch the whole thing? I mean, all they gotta do is throw some, well, make it sound simple, but throw some trusses in there, you'll boom bada bing, you got pitch.
Doug, can you get a quote?
Yeah.
Get a couple quotes?
Yes. I'll go down tomorrow and I'll meet you tomorrow.
Okay.
You ask them about PVC like we did on the police department?
Yes, yes, I will.
You got anything else, Bruce?
No, I said...
Troy, you got anything?
I just missed you guys.
On the old business.
Real quick, I do, I just got a text. I've been waiting on it today from Mike Adams from MP. We met up here, uh, for the electric transformer and all that to where it was gonna come off the pole right at the corner and run power over there.
Oh.
That'll eventually be moved when you do High Street, redo High Street and all that. That'll, that'll have to be redone again. So they'd like to go back to the next pole, the newspaper parking lot that has the transformer on it and go from there, run power to the island and tie back in there, then bore it from mare over to the new transformer. And that way, when we do High Street, then that part'll all be done. If not, we'll have to redo the electric when it comes. So the added costs to go on that, bore it, run conduit and extra wire is $5,561 if we wanna go ahead and...
Well, it's planted ahead, I have the optimism.
So...
I wouldn't say it would. I mean, we're basically taking out that pole in the corner.
Yes, that'll, that'll, whether we do it right this minute, we could eventually take those two poles out. And you'll obviously want the one in the center island out when we redo High Street. So they'll be able to tie it in right there and we won't have to do any more born.
I like planting ahead, save cost down the road, hopefully.
Yeah, well, either way, we're gonna have to eventually do it. It's just whether you wanna go ahead and make that adjustment now and get done with it.
I agree.
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that it, Doug?
Yes, I'm sorry. He just, he just sent it to me. He emailed it. I can't get to it, so he texted it to me. Thank you.
And by having old business...
Did you wanna talk about the park bathrooms?
Is it on the table? The park bathrooms or you just...
I mean...
I really didn't know this thing, I just didn't know.
Yeah. The park board met. Ideally, a couple of members would like the pool bathrooms renovated with exterior access. But that's extensive renovations. What else? And then, but then, I've, I mean, that's a lot of money. Um, then the, um, it was brought up about a prefab concrete building, but there's no estimate. It's an easy set building. Is that right, Chris?
Yes.
Easy set. Um, they had one put in the parks, one of the parks at Terre Haute, but there's no estimate or anything, so.
And who's gonna easily set it?
I don't know.
Easy set it.
I don't know who does the buildings. I, it's just like you have to call and have a rep and it's not like you can price it online and it's.
It might be worth a phone call. I mean.
Was there any discussion about maybe doing an additional one closer to the, cause Saturday night, something we've noticed is there were a lot of folks, it was a long walk for them to get from the pavilion.
It was discussed. Um, I mean, I don't, I mean, it depends on how much the board wants to.
Well, the bathrooms there now are mainly used during the summer for ball, a ball field. People arrive. What you just talked about were kind of alternatives to what the proposals we have, right?
Well, the prefab one, you basically take it down to the whatever, the pad, and then put this prefab building on it. And yeah, that was discussed, but I mean, it's, I mean, if you wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars and refab, you know, refab those bathrooms and then put another bathroom in, have at it. But, I mean, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, well, the part, yeah, the, 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 the well's not bottomless.
Right. I mean, you talk about like even until that time comes, maybe put porta potties over there. And, I mean, it's not ideal, but it's not a huge expenditure either.
Well.
It's pricier than you'd think.
No, not as much as a new bathroom.
I guess, I guess.
Well, something else we've kind of talked about too was what, what if in order to get something, even if there's only just, you know, one, one men's, one women's closer over there, what if we just redid what's in the cement bathroom, like with porcelain sinks and, or not porcelain, the, the stainless sinks and toilets?
What do you mean? In the current, the existing bathrooms?
In the existing bathroom. Instead of getting a new building, could we not?
I don't know.
Could we not?
Those, I, I'll still, I'll still stand by it. I think those need to be done for our kids. I mean, they've been junk for a million years and they're gross and it's dank and dark and nasty.
Well, I mean, lighting can lighten that.
Ah, yeah, but they're.
It's disgusting.
It's disgusting and has been. I mean, my kid's been out, I was, we were present down there, I don't even know when, back in the mid two thousands and they were terrible then, so.
Do you have the information on those other bathrooms?
Um, kinda.
Luke was looking into it. He said he would have a quote, but I haven't seen it yet.
I mean, I'd be interested in what they are.
We had a quote from Shangri.
We have two quotes right now.
That's totally redone.
We have two quotes, but.
One's a wood frame with a metal, then there's a block that's for some reason metal on the block.
Yeah.
And, so, the question arises, well, why not just do that, what do you call that block, the sculptured or, you know, the, the. The aesthetically appeasing block that they use a lot on, say like McDonald's or some other places, uh, instead of putting metal on block.
I don't like that.
But, well, it sounds like we're, we're, we're not anywhere to make a decision. Again, I, I guess I didn't bring up this time is the, the, you know, two different contractors came in and gave us bids. And they had envisioned what they thought we wanted kinda. And one came in with a block building, one came in with a different type building. Of course, their bids are quite a bit hard because of the materials and, and what they thought we wanted. Um, I don't know how to come up with better specs, but golly, we need to have everybody at the same page in the bid is what.
Well, I mean, he was told metal building. Why he chose brick is beyond, cause that's, Dave and I talked about doing a metal building to make easy access to the plumbing and all that. Why he came back with the block buildings was his, his choice.
But as far as the actual specifications, I mean, really primarily went ADA, you know, accessible.
So basically.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, I mean.
And the question is, are we gonna heat them in the winter? Are we heating these in the winter? We do, we don't now.
We don't, we don't now.
Uh.
They, they get shipped down.
Yeah.
So, so basically, yeah, I guess the board needs to decide whether we're gonna go to a metal building or you wanna a block building. So when we sit down, or need to sit down and discuss that sometime.
Okay. When should we do that?
Yeah, we can do it in a workshop. I mean, it's not like we have to, well, I'm saying that we can do it in a budget workshop. Um, instead of making, you know, another meeting. I mean, you can all set and think about ideas you wanna have, have it broken down and, you know, we'll come in and.
Yeah, the thing you can answer, you, you know, we want stainless steel, obviously, and then you gotta go with ADA and that's expensive. To do what you were asking, we looked into that. And to go ADA, you're losing a stall and then one of the sinks in the girls. So you had, gotta have it. So you lose.
Gotcha.
To get everything into that room. So that, we, we talked about that and, and everything. So you did lose things.
When does baseball start season start?
April, March, March, right after, um, right after the, um, jamboree usually, or spring break, spring break, right? We always started after spring break, right after spring.
We start playing innovator beginning of May.
Jamborees, practices start.
Practices, yes.
Right after spring break.
Bathrooms aren't open till April first though.
Yeah.
They keep starting practice earlier.
Yeah.
We've always opened them April first to make sure that we don't.
Cause it still freezes.
Yes. Yeah, so.
Well.
Well, I mean, we've looking into, we've looking for that too. I mean, just to see, get some quotes on it, so. Um, is that what you guys wanna do? I mean, just talk about this in a work, workshop?
You can send me emails and some ideas you have. We can try to put something together previously, so whatever we do, we can make it quicker.
All right, sounds good to me. Um, I wanted to talk about cemetery mapping. Where are we at with that for a week?
Done.
Oh, okay.
I think it's been done.
Yeah, done a lot.
Okay.
So cemetery.
We actually saw a lot of the, the, uh, previously, uh, the graves that we thought were occupied, then tried to be occupied. Nick provided the affidavit that we have to check them, make sure they're by there. We actually saw quite a few of those already that's just found in.
We have a meeting next week, cemetery. When is it? When is the next cemetery meeting? Week after next?
I can't keep track of it.
I think it's, uh, noon on the sixteenth. Uh, let's probably talk about that map. I, I didn't realize it was completely done. Um, yeah.
However, that being said, and I guess we've got new help coming down there in February, but Mark has expressed concern because he is approaching at some point retirement or poor health or whatever, that somebody else needs not do that system. At the cemetery, I'm, I'm thinking somebody at the town office already does, but, um, that being said, I mean, we're trying to find somebody who's career minded for that cemetery and not just day help.
While we're on the cemetery, can I bring up the, the, the need for a, a infant cremation stand? Apparently our stand is not. Very good. Did, everybody get the email on that?
If I may.
Okay.
Uh, basically, at the, at the, at the, at the, at the child that does something for that, it's basically like a sawhorse covered after turf. Um, and what, uh, it's gonna be kind of like a dish you pass in if you want. It's gonna be like a table that then has velvet, green velvet off over the top of it and then like green satin bunting around it. It'd be for infant burials and also for cremation. So you have something to put the urn or whatever on there. Four ninety-five plus shipping.
I make a motion. Second.
All favor.
All right.
We'll do that. We will, that's why this thing.
And I have one more thing before you move on tonight.
Keep your ready.
Is it cemetery related?
No.
Okay. Are we moving off of the cemetery then?
I think we are.
Okay. One more time, I wanna bring up banners. We talked about the flag banners. Are you guys interested in doing banners for the other towns and the county and all that or not? I mean, we have to spend this money.
I thought we had already.
For us. I don't think we ever voted on it to do.
Um, I, I, I don't know how many of you are considering, but I'm sure it's not, you know, it's a few.
I'd say four to eight for each town and county. I mean, it's, I mean, we've got.
And these are seasonal things we're putting up.
So just so we can be clear on our specifications, like, so are they gonna submit what they would like their banners to be like and then this board approves them? Or a committee approves them instead of them just saying this is what we want and.
The towns that I have talked to, and it's been, it's been a while back, they really didn't seem to care one way or the other. I mean, they were just kind of excited that we would do it. Um, and I've reached out to Courtney Cook. She's done the ones on Howard Avenue. Uh, I haven't got anything back from her yet, but.
Would this just be for the incorporated communities or?
Yes, yes.
I would just suggest that we put something in there that has to be approved by.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How are they wanting, what are they wanting on their banner? If you're Marshall, you know, what does Marshall want on their banner?
I just wanna make sure that we're, I mean, if, if we're gonna do it, I wanna get a vote on it.
I'll move.
You know, and, I mean, what I said to, to Courtney was, you know, definitely, you know, cost estimates, everything else that, you know, we would have to approve it before.
Right. I mean, the, the design specifically.
And the designs.
Just got to know what somebody would throw up there. You never know.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So, is that a second?
Yes. Under duress.
All favor.
I.
I just wanna move on from it, so.
So, do you submit a design for purple basically?
Yeah.
If they so, choose to do so, I would give them a date.
Do they, uh, does each design have a fee to it? Like once you pay for a certain design and then it's.
Changing it?
Changing it would incur additional expenses.
I would assume so.
So I would make sure they're where, so if they wanna do four different banners, it's gonna be, you know, I guess that's what.
Yeah, I'd recommend staying with just one design, yeah. Cause it takes, you, you.
Specify it's one design per town.
Yeah, they're hard to see anyway with this. You have to slow down, especially with old people, to see what it is. So if they have at least four of them the same style, you reckon, oh, I recognize that one. That is.
Okay. Uh, police parking. Uh, Bill and Ian have been talking about taking a couple of spots up, up here. And we also talked about letting those guys park in the yellow zone, making that police parking only. And I think if, if it becomes an issue, I think we could shift parking anyways, but do you guys have an issue with that? If we, I mean, that way, if we do that, we're not taking any more parking spots, especially on High Street.
Two, two spots, well, we're talking about out front somewhere, right?
And it's like, it's like these guys said, they're not gonna be sitting there all day or all night or anything else. It's just gonna be a place for them to park, run in, to do their business and, um, so.
Oh, we approve that.
I do too.
We're talking about moving.
We're talking about moving. Space to the yellow. We've basically created two additional spots where the current giant yellow zone is.
Right on us.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
All right.
Thank you. Uh, one other thing, uh, since we're moving here, moving from here, we have a lot of documents in the basement, correct? Uh, I just wanna throw this out there.
I have a doctor's order. I can't care.
With our documentation.
I'm sorry.
What are we gonna do with our old records?
Uh, well, yeah, I assume some of them would be pitched. Uh, I guess the question is, we have some downstairs. Doug, you still have some down at the.
We still have a bunch at the waste yard plant on top of here.
And where at in the new place that we're planning on putting the stuff.
So, that's where we started putting the house in the.
Well, how old's the stuff we're putting upstairs?
Four years.
Yes, most of it's.
It's from the last audit.
Okay, your financial stuff.
Any document that we have.
I'm not worried about your data. I'm thinking more about the, the, the.
Cemetery park.
Utilities data mainly.
Information that we have collected.
I know you're talking.
We don't, I mean, nobody seems to be able to get, get ahold of it or whatever. Um, I mean, what are we doing with it, I guess, is what my point is. Uh, it needs to be readily, readily available, even if it's upstairs, if somebody comes in and needs.
It'd be nice if it could be scanned and kept in a.
Well, some of it definitely, yeah, some of it's probably irrelevant. Yeah, oh, that brings up the printed plot of thing. I know. We need a printed plot or something to print, like I think it's thirty-two to twenty-four, uh, these maps. I believe there's a person from, uh, uh, the Stormwater folks gonna bring by some data tomorrow, print out and, uh, an electronic copy. I saw, I don't know, are you on that?
I saw it today, but I haven't read it.
Uh, yeah, it's a reoccurring need and we can certainly scan in some of our old maps.
Yes.
Make a motion, we buy one.
Well, okay. We need to figure, we need to talk to, who's our.
We need a price on which our copier company gives us for that daily price.
Okay, you wanna get some data?
What size do you want?
Well, what's a common size of these maps we get, all these drawings? I mean, is there a standard in these three that probably is?
Three by four or something.
Think the one we had.
I mean, anytime you're dealing with, with blueprints, I mean.
You might have a vision.
Am I awful?
I'm sure they can, the copier company can tell you what the.
Well, yeah, I'm pretty sure they're seeing it in the industry, but yeah, you want something that prints a standard size, so. Uh, well, in fact, we had that discussion with Decker and, uh, oh, uh, who did the water, it's no problem. B and T, yes, thank you. They were talking about the standard size maps. Yeah, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with the stuff and, and have it on storage, what we can get rid of. Uh, so yeah, the stuff in the basement's probably super old.
That stuff is, yeah, some of it's documents that don't have to be kept and then what you have to keep for a lifetime will go into the attic.
Light, oh, good lord.
There's certain stuff that you can never destroy, so.
Hmm, what gave the fire? Well, is there, okay, I'm assuming most of this.
It's like payroll stuff, you know.
Most of the stuff that is probably financial?
Those stubs from the sixties. I mean, a lot of it was put down there, but should've never gone to the basement. It should've just been handled.
Okay.
Through documents and taken care of. So a lot of it is stuff that does not need to be kept, I would say.
Do we have one of those industrial shredders?
We can have a company come in with that.
Yeah. We did three hundred six boxes, got a clutch in there.
You, you might even, Don got that eight thousand dollar one that is massive. It does, like, does everything except ginormous cardboard boxes?
The card hurt at Coon House?
In the basement.
My question is, all right, so how are we gonna do it? Is each department gonna take care of their own? Uh, I mean, I, I don't know. That's the question I'm, I guess.
Once we stop meeting in this room, we can bring it all upstairs. They can be all brought upstairs and figure out what to keep in the heads.
Most things have a ten year, I mean, if it's after ten years, let alone or after an audit, you can get rid of most things.
And there's, I mean, there's a retention schedule to follow, so it just fill that out, determine those, that's retention schedule.
Well, it is a good time to go through some of this stuff and be a little less hectic, uh, figure out how to store our, uh, blueprints that we have, our mixed stuff and maybe scan some of it. I'm sure some of it's way outdated. Probably a lot of reputation. Uh, but here lately, we've, we've, you know, the last ten years, we've had a lot of electronic copies of things. Well, we need to come up with a plan, figure it out, uh, yeah.
Well, I think it only makes sense for each department to bear their own documents and just, you know, use that retention schedule and based on that.
Yeah.
Decide what goes, what goes and what stays, I mean.
That sounds good to me.
Kevin, what do you got?
Uh, just coming to update, um, on the Market Street project that relates to Main Street, that you know we moved all the heavy planters, or Doug did the town, moved those planters around for us. Uh, we have four new black planters coming this month to get prepared to keep, in keeping with the coals and the, and the bollards and, and all that. Um, Main Street also ordered, I think, four or two trash cans along.
Six.
Six, uh, to place around the square. Uh, and I think the others will be going to the park too, the, the stone ones. Um, we are gonna have to have Doug, uh, one at the Presbyterian Church, um, is gonna be moved down to St. Joe's along Thirty-Sixth. And the one on the corner of Jefferson, I mean, Market and Thirty-Sixth will move into the center of the, uh, post office entry. So other than that, we, uh, we're pretty good to go.
The planters?
Yes. And that, as you guys redo streets, we'll keep getting the black planters. The only other thing was the, the trash cans, you might report this, Randy, the trash cans that came with the project have ashtrays on top of them. Which is gonna get train wrecked and water and all that stuff. People, I don't know why you wanna smoke on, on top of trash can, but, uh, we're, we're looking and seeing maybe if we can get those either cut off or removed and inverted and painted so that we don't have those anymore, so. The, the trash cans that were ordered have doors too, right? They have caps and doors.
And I don't think the ones of the project have a door for changing. They're just on the wire. Um, there's four trash cans, there's four benches and four bike racks.
Bike racks. So anyway, that's what we're at. We appreciate the help, but, uh, Doug and his crew for moving those things around for us.
Oh.
That's it.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
I did have one thing. Um, it was mentioned to me about, uh, getting a bike rack and placing it at the new parking lot in that very narrow space. We have one. Is it there? No, I mean, we have one available. Great, because it's kind of that, it was the Miss Park space, but it'd be probably good.
Well, you put bikes in there though, how would that affect the parking space it is next to it? You're talking down, which corner are you in?
Be the northeast corner.
Yeah. And the bike rack goes this way and the bike's sticking out this way. Won't that go into that?
Bike racks are a lot different now. They're not that long.
Right. Like there's only about usually four on each side.
Yeah, but still, I'm thinking, well, a bike's sitting in there and it's sticking out. Won't it go into the other parking spaces? Well, come look at it. That's a good idea.
Okay, so if we can get a bike rack, then it'd work in that space.
Well, we can find another spot possibly to put a bike rack. We should have one somewhere.
I thought it'd be a good use of the space that's wasted.
Yeah, it's a nasty wasted space. It's like, okay, what do you do with that? I wanna see a car that fits it.
Smart car.
Any other public comment?
Shaw. We could get it with Shaw.
Anybody else have anything else?
I make a motion, do you, John?
I'll second that.
On favor?
All right.
Thank you all, Kevin.